Has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, August 6, 2024. We have the notices to be marked. This is B1 for the record.
Maybe I roll call.
Okay, I see Commissioner Zablucki.
Present.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns. And Acting Chair Allen.
Here.
We have a total of five commissioners tonight.
Can you swear in the staff?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any correspondence?
Yes. In new business, item number, item number 10, this is case Z 2023-0019. The address is 136 Delaware Avenue. They have requested to carry to the September 26 meeting with preservation of notice. And item number 13, this is case Z 20-043. The address is 201 Newark Avenue. They've requested to carry to the October 10 meeting with preservation of notice. And I do want to state for the record that our meeting on September 12th, uh, this is our regular meeting, it will be canceled. So we will meet on our regular meeting on September 26.
Please stand and salute the flag.
I prejudice to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the Germans we have, so we're gonna start the meeting with case Z 2024-0030, a one-year site plan extension. The address is 1012 Berkeley Place and the attorney is Veronica Schmee. Schmel. Schm- Schmee, okay.
All right, good evening. Veronica Schmee of Connell Foley, uh, for the applicant Patel Indopac Grocery under case number Z 2024-0030, property being 1012 Berkeley Place. I'm here to request on behalf of the applicant their final one-year extension of their approvals that they obtained under Z 19-057. This was approved on October 22 of 2020, which took us to that date of 2022. Thereafter, the applicant got, uh, two additional extensions under Z 22-007 and Z 23-036, which took us to October 22 of this year. Um, applicant now respectfully requests of this board its third and final extension, which would take us to October 22 of 2025. Um, the reason being twofold, the first being the applicant is in the process of developing some other properties in Jersey City. Um, in particular, there's one phase development, which has tied up a lot of their time and, uh, resources. The second real crux being here is they have, um, some residential tenants on the property at Berkeley Place. Um, my understanding is that they're also elderly, so they took a little bit of time to help them to relocate and move out. And looking down the barrel of the rest of the demolition and permitting process, the applicant is anticipating needing a little bit of additional time.
Staff, staff.
Uh, staff recommends approval with prior conditions.
Okay, um, the one from the public. Okay, public's, uh, comments are closed. They have a motion.
I'll second it. I will second it.
All right, on a motion to approve, Commissioner Shadid. Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Burns.
Yes.
Commissioner Zablucki.
Yes.
And Acting Chair Allen.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, next case, Z 2024-0042, a one-year site plan extension. The address is 88 Highland Avenue. The attorney is Michael Higgins.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Higgins of Castana Quigley Chiramie here, uh, for the applicant. This is a one-year site plan extension, uh, for 88 Highland. It was, approvals are currently set to expire, uh, August 25th of this year. Uh, if the approval is granted by the board, it would, uh, extend us until August 25th, 2025. Um, this is one of, uh, one of those projects where Mutti Bajaj was the architect and, and unfortunately she passed away. So the applicant's been somewhat hindered by that. Yeah.
Staff recommendations?
Staff recommends approval with prior conditions.
No, no public comment? Public comment is closed, uh, may I have a motion?
Yes, I would like to get a motion for, uh, over, case 22-024-0042, offer extension.
I'll second it.
On a, on a motion to approve, Commissioner Zablucki.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid. Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Burns. Acting Chair Allen.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you. The next case is KZ 2024-0013, C and D variance. The address is 212 Hancock Avenue. The attorney is James Burke.
I have it set here if you wish. No, he, he paid it. He said he sent you the check. Said he sent it certified or by overnight? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, we, we believe at first it was a D variance and we were talking to staff today. They determined it was only a C variance. So, um, you know, we were happy to accept that since you have six members and, uh, we would need five affirmative votes. So that leaves us, that leaves us with C variances only. Right, right. So, oh, okay, so, yeah, we have a number of C variances, but by, by way of background, uh, the building, uh, suffered a bit of a fire. Um, so it's empty. Right now it's a three-family building and, um, the applicant wishes to, uh, rebuild and, and expand a bit. Uh, there's several purposes for expanding. Uh, one is some of the rooms, they were so old, they didn't fit the, uh, current standards for, uh, the building code. They were smaller, so he wishes to expand those rooms. And, uh, and then a new, a better fire, a fire escape will be built on the back of the building, uh, which is also going to be an improvement, plus new wiring and so forth. So that's what, so, you know, to borrow from the Biden administration, it's gonna be build back better. That's what, uh, that's what we're hoping here. Um, so I've got two witnesses. Uh, the first will be our architect. And, uh, let me just say upfront, the architect that I'm introducing is a New Jersey licensed architect. He's, he has with him his associate, who is not a licensed architect, but we're hoping you would allow him to speak because he's more or less the project architect and he knows the details of the plans as well or better. So let's see. Okay, come on up. You stand here.
Could you raise your right hand this morning? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I mean, could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure. Joseph Cestaro, C E S T A R O.
Could you give us the benefit of your background and state whether you're currently a New Jersey licensed architect?
Sure, I have a license in New Jersey. Um, I graduated in 2011 from New Jersey Institute of Technology. Um, I have a firm located in Wykoff, New Jersey, a four-person firm for about four years.
Have you appeared before other boards or is this the first time you're appearing?
Yes, dozens.
Can you state a few names of towns?
Um, mostly Burn County, but around here, Moncler, Newark, Livingston, Wykoff, Ridgewood.
All right.
I'd burst Hudson County?
Not at all, not at all.
He'll answer that question, he'll answer that question later, after he finishes. So, uh, we'll, uh,
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yes. This gentleman is Colin McGardle.
Yeah, Colin McGardle.
Could you raise your right hand this morning? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Colin McGardle, it's C O L I N, and then McGardle is M C A R D L E.
So just give the board the benefit of some of your credentials. You're not a licensed architect, but I understand you're in the process of becoming one and you've been working on this project. Too fast? Okay. All right, yeah, let me speak one at a time. You're not a licensed architect, correct?
Correct.
All right, but you have a degree in architecture.
Correct.
All right, and you are studying to, taking the, the various tests to become an architect?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, so you are the project manager in essence on this?
Yes.
All right, so what I'd like you to do is just walk through, you've heard that there is no D variance, it's just the C variances. But just walk through, uh, what the, uh, the, uh, project entails.
Sure. Do you want me to hook up the laptop?
Please do, yes. All right, so.
Uh, this was a previously existing three-family. It had three bedrooms. The unfinished cellar was just unfinished. There was some owner's storage in there, but pretty much it was just mechanical space. The ground floor had an existing three-bedroom. Second floor had an existing three-bedroom. Third floor had an existing three-bedroom. We were requesting six variances. Now it's down to five with the elimination of the D variance. And they are in our chart here. They're the side yard setback, which we're just expanding the non-conforming use, uh, condition. Um, the combined side yard setback, the rear yard setback, and then two encroachments, one for the fire escape and then one for a set of stairs that are going in the backyard. As far as the proposed plans, as you can see, so in the basement or cellar, we're keeping it unfinished as well. We're just providing some tenant storage down there as well as a trash room. The mechanical equipment will be located down there as well, as well as some owner's storage that he's gonna keep down there. This we are requesting to s- keep as a three-bedroom on the ground floor. The previous, one of the previous bedrooms here in this corner, that bedroom was only, eight foot one by seven foot two, it was only 55 square feet, so it's, too small for today's standards. So we are doing the addition so we can have three bedrooms that conform with today's standards and codes.
All right, and just reference the page number on that.
Sure, that is on page V2.
Okay.
And then on the next page, on page V3, we have the same conditions, a very small bedroom in this corner here. That bedroom is 6'7" by 8'8", which is only 58 square feet. So again, the addition is just to create two, uh, bedrooms in the rear that will be conforming to today's standards and codes. And then likewise, the same thing on the third floor. The small bedroom up there is only 6'3" by 8'10", and that's 56 square feet. And then we just get more space so we can have, again, three conforming bedrooms.
And any changes on the roof or any, is there a green roof or what is there?
The roof will just be, uh, partly mechanical, but it's gonna be a flat roof, just as it is now, um, just open. We're proposing a two-sided fi- uh, two-stair fire escape. So each unit has an escape route. And then the elevations, I can walk through. The addition, this gray line on page V41. This is what is getting extended past that gray line. And you can see the fire escape that we are proposing. V4.2 shows the fire escape a lo- in a little bit more detail. That's gonna have a retractable stair that will pull down as needed, um, just for some security concerns. So it's not permanently affixed to the ground.
Any other comments?
Yeah, do you want me to walk through the materials or anything? We have it on V4.1, just stucco and siding, hardy siding. Pretty standard, I think, for the area.
I don't think so. Okay, all right. Uh, any questions in general from the board?
I just have one question. Or do we want to let the public go first? No public? Okay, so my, my one question is the, the current extension that's on there, will that be demoed or you just adding on to the extension?
Adding on, yeah.
That, that's my only question. Uh, any, any more?
I do, we have a planner. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you both.
No problem.
Could you raise your right hand this morning? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Sure, Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
I think you know Mr. Bellamy, and just for the record, your license is still current.
Yes, my, uh, professional planners license is current and in good standing. Um, this actually is my first time in person in front of this board, so it's nice to see all you guys. Getting right into the testimony, this project is located in the neighborhood housing R1 district. Um, as you heard from your arcs, our, our architect, it's really just a square off the back of the building, add some square footage to provide, um, adequate room sizes, uh, for all the bedrooms in the back to meet modern A building codes. Um, this previously would have been an expansion of non-conforming use variance, but with the change of zoning, multi-family is now permitted, so we have an existing density that's gonna remain the same. Um, we were previously conservatively calling it out, but, um, after discussions with city planning, as mentioned. We were previously a non-conforming density, um, but w- we're maintaining the same. So there's, there's no density variance being requested here tonight after those discussions. Um, we do have several bulk C variances that we're asking for. They're really all related to the, uh, fire escape, the balcony, deck and stairs from the, from the rear of the building. Um, we do have an e- expansion of the, um, existing non-conforming side yard setbacks. Um, one of them is two feet, two inches on the south side of the building and then zero feet on the north side of the building. So the minimum is, is two feet, um, and the, the maximum, uh, minimum combined is five feet, one inches. So we're asking for both the minimum one side and, and combined side yard setbacks. Um, we're not actually ex- uh, expand, extending beyond the building to the north. Um, so we're not creating a, a, a condition where there's, um, a blockage of light air and open space on, on that adjacent building. The other variances, as I mentioned, are related to the fire escape. Fire escapes and balconies are permitted to extend five feet beyond the, beyond the building into the required rear yard. The building itself, we're proposing does meet the minimum rear yard setback. We have a 30-foot, eight-inch, uh, rear yard setback to the building line where 30 feet's, um, required. What doesn't meet is that we're actually proposing a deck, which by definition, it, it's part of the fire escape, but it really, um, it extends to the ground. So that's where the rear yard setback comes in, cause that's where the rear yard setback has to be measured from. So what we're asking for there is 24.7 feet to the edge of that, that deck, which is essentially, and when you view it, really part of the fire escape that we're asking for. Um, the fire escape itself extends, uh, I believe it's five feet, eight inches from, from the rear of the building, so about eight, um, eight inches beyond what's permitted into the required rear yard. So it's very minor, it's really just to provide a little bit more space and some separation between the actual fire escape and, and the building. Um, we're also asking for a, a variance for the projection of the stairs into the rear yard. Um, from our ground floor, um, you could kind of see it here, we have a landing and then stairs that go into the rear yard. There is a slight, um, I would say pretty significant, um, topographic grade change in the back there. So the stairs are really required to provide for that access into the rear yard. Um, and then to provide a little bit of a landing space, um, that's, that's where the variance comes in. So we're asking for, um, 10, 10 feet, 10.8 feet where, uh, four feet's permitted to encroach into the rear yard. I believe the last, uh, variance we have is for the balcony. Um, this aligns with the fire escape. It, it projects from the third floor here and you could see it's, it's not attached at all to the fire escape. So by definition, that's a balcony. And again, we're, we're exceeding that by approximately eight inches into the, the required, uh, rear yard setback area. I think overall, all these variances can be granted pursuant to the flexible C2 standard, where the, um, benefits would substantially outweigh the detriment here. Um, overall, I think the project does promote the purposes of the municipal land use law. I think we continue to be in appropriate use and development of the property, consistent with purpose A. Um, as I stated, we're maintaining the density, um, which an appropriate density for the building, consistent with purpose E. And I think we are providing adequate, um, setbacks and, and we're meeting the coverage standard, um, consistent with purpose C of the municipal land use law. Um, I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare here. I think we're actually promoting it. We're improving some of the conditions on the property, including the existing non-conforming front yard coverage. I did have a chance to visit the site and it's almost entirely impervious concrete area. So we are adding pretty significant landscaping, as well as one street tree, um, which I think will be a nice addition to the, to the streetscape. Increasing the size of the, the bedrooms, um, to meet modern building codes, I think also, um, is a positive here. Um, given the history of the site, unfortunate fire that happened here, I think meeting all modern A building codes is a, is a great aspect of this project. Um, likewise, I don't see a substantial impairment to the, uh, zone plan or zoning ordinance. I think we meet the purposes of the R1 district, as well as the purposes of the master plan. Um, with that, I, I would say the project meets both the p- positive and negative criteria. Um, and that would conclude my direct testimony unless the board has any questions.
Anyone from the public have comments?
Christopher Lallo, 210 Hancock Avenue. L A L L O. Um, I have a driveway.
Uh, Shadid, Tom. You have, okay, you have two minutes.
I have a driveway on the south side, I believe. And there's an alleyway on 210, uh, on 212. Uh, my understanding is that you need to keep that three-feet margin for an alleyway. Is that correct? My understanding is that you want to expand two feet and take away. So how are, how are the people getting from the fire escape and from the backyard? How are they gonna get to the front of the house if they don't have an alleyway? I have, also have an adjacent fence there on my property line that I want protected. And if they're gonna do any construction, if they could put any type of barrier, sheet barrier to prevent, nails and et cetera going into my driveway. So, cause I'm always accessing my driveway, I have garages in the back.
I'd like to bring, um, the architect back up to just answer the one question. And then, of course, uh, we could put that as a condition, the barrier and so forth to make sure, cause I know that, that can be a real problem, you know?
Yeah.
I got a nail in my tire the other day, you know?
Yeah.
And how far back are you planning on going?
Hang on, let, let me have him address that one question.
Sure. So the existing, you can see it on the front page, the existing out, Colin McGardle.
Can we get access to this?
Sure. As long, yeah.
That's my, my house.
Right, so the existing alleyway, you can see here, we have this fence here and this. So this setback already is 2.2 feet. We're just, um, proposing to maintain that same setback, so nothing would really change space-wise. It's the same, same as a, just a little bit further back.
I just wanna be clear, you're not encroaching onto that alley?
No.
Okay.
No.
So you're, you're going deep as opposed to width?
Correct.
And how far, how far?
So from that side, we are going back 19 feet. And then seven feet from, from this other side.
Can you bring up that backyard picture again, please?
Sure. It's gonna match this almost, it's, doesn't quite go as far as this, this moment here.
So it's gonna matching?
Correct, so it's matching the adjacent.
It's matching.
Almost matching.
This would be the north side, right?
Correct.
This house would be the north side that you were referring to, correct? Okay, so I'm imagining that you're just, you're gonna extend the house to equal with the house on the north side.
Correct, not quite as far, but almost. It's a little less than that house.
Uh, what about all the, the grass?
That's, so where the building is, is gonna be building, but we're proposing grass as much as we can. We'll have a little walkway, but we're conforming with the impervious coverages.
Is someone gonna trim that? Cause the, the weeds are all along the fence and.
I can't, no, what, uh,
I, I, I would assume.
I, I think that, absolutely, but that's because I think the building's been, uh, you know.
Yeah, empty for so long.
So, I mean, I, on the record, the architect has said that there will be landscaping, you know, and improvements to the back to make it look better. And a tree will be planted in the front. Is that correct? Yeah. That was on the record.
I have a question too.
You have to be sworn in.
Okay.
Could you raise your right hand this morning? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth?
Yes.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Could you state and spell your full name and provide the rankings?
My name is Carlos Sanchez, I'm a landlord from, uh, 214. I just worrying is about, uh, deck in the back. They are, gonna have a deck?
Balcony.
Balcony?
Yeah, just a, a small balcony.
Uh, how, how it's small is because, and then, then, I don't know what kind of neighbor we're gonna, you know, uh, tenants we're gonna have. My window is next almost to the house. Some people they like to hang out outside and really, nobody like to have a noise um, in the middle of the night or in the morning. That's why I say, you know, how is, you know, so it's gonna. Yeah, but.
Mr. Sanchez, um, the city does have a noise ordinance, this on, um, and I believe there is a desbum line, I don't know off the top of my head, but this, this is separate from any land use or zoning considerations. Um, the city does regulate noises and nuisance.
I already have a experience with this house before. It's, they, they have a tenants and they have a party every Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
I think on the record, it's six by six, so I don't know how many people are gonna party on that deck, but six by six is.
Six by six is a good size to be four people aside. Yes. We, we talking about six by six, like?
Okay, any, any more questions?
Oh, that's, that, that's my warning about, you know, balcony.
Okay, they, they'll, they'll answer it. Um, anybody wanna answer the question about the, the party on the deck? And, I mean, it's pretty, uh, you know, simple answer.
And when would, Christopher Lallo again, uh, when would the construction begin? And when would, Christopher Lallo again, uh, when would the construction begin?
Um, it's tough to say, but, you know, if this board approves the matter, then it has to go to the building department, uh, you know, and show the plans to the, uh, building department, and then, when the permits are issued, then the construction would commence.
And the, the front of the house, is it a driveway, or, no, you're planting a tree, you said?
Sorry, what was your question?
Uh, the front of the house, what are your plans for the front of the house, tree?
Just some landscaping, yes, and no, no parking, there's just gonna be, this is all concrete right now, and we're just proposing a landscaping, you can see here.
Building out to the front also?
This is just low.
You're gonna keep it empty, as is?
Yeah, it's empty, yeah, the front won't change, we're just proposing, you know, landscaping along the front, just to get rid of some of the concrete that's there, so it's not a hundred percent covered.
Just wanna make sure that my fence doesn't get destroyed in the process?
No, no, that, that wouldn't.
Because, uh, it's right on the, the property line there, so...
Yeah.
Any more questions?
That's my...
Any, any other, um, comments from the public?
Do you object to the building extending, or not?
Oh, no, they're extending, they're gonna cover this, just the, that's all, like I see there, it's like, they're gonna cover this part over here to make another...
Yeah, they're gonna come out toward your house.
Right?
That's right.
This is all off the record, is it not?
No, they're on the record.
Okay, then, yeah, two minutes up, yes.
We can't have any conversations going on like this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, questions from the board?
Uh, we're just going to send this gentleman a set of the prints, uh, you know, architectural prints, you know, hard copy, not a, not a, uh...
It just, it, it just seems like, um, actually, it's nice hearing the, the neighbors come out and with concern of your properties next door, um, but most of the issues that you brought up, obviously are concerning, but really are issues that occur after the fact, like the noise ordinances and things like that, but it is gonna be in the record, obviously, as conditions, as they mentioned before, so...
I, I, you know, thank you for that, but, you know, this is like, right now, we're talking about this, but later on, with everything is, you ready a construction, and then who you call? This person, he never answered, I have, uh, the, the house was on fire, it was never cleaned on the top of the roof, they break my w- windshield, I had to, I had to report to my insurance, I have a, I have a, uh, recording that piece of, uh, wood come from the roof, he never answered about that, so what's going on, when everything is ready, who you had to call?
Well, it certainly seems like now you'll have, at least, from what we could tell, a better house next door, a better project, and hopefully, more than likely, better tenants, so, you know, at least, everything would indicate that.
We're talking about this, that's not gonna happen.
Well, we'll hope so, we'll hope so.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah, uh, uh, gentleman, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh, that concludes our presentation, and, um, I think the only thing we've revealed is that someone could be on a deck, you know, being loud, and again, there are no, noise ordinances to prevent that, or at least provide a remedy, uh, and if I'm not invited, then probably won't be that loud, so...
Yeah.
How about from staff? Let's hear staff.
Certainly, thank you, counsel. Um, so before I get into my staff report, um, I just want to note and put on the record that, um, per balconies are an allowed feature in the R one neighborhood housing district, um, a five-foot balcony would be allowed as of right, um, in this case, we have a six-foot balcony because it's integrated with the fire escape, um, but that's a de minimis difference, and functionally, it'll be a very similar balcony, um, which is an as-of-right allowed feature on buildings here. Um, so staff filed a report dated August first, twenty twenty-four, um, and much of the content of this report, um, really just substantiates, um, Mr. Bellamy's testimony regarding the suitability of the variances and the, um, um, and greatly outweighing the detriments involved. Um, as mentioned before, this application had previously applied for a D five variance for density, um, it was determined that as the structure is being expanded, as opposed to demolished and rebuilt, um, the pre-existing density of fifty-two point three units per acre, which works out to a three-unit building here, um, is, is grandfathered, and so, um, they're allowed that three-unit use as of right without a variance. Um, this is a, somewhat of a change from the way we previously, our zoning previously interacted with sites like these, um, previously, when we had a hard cap of two units, um, that would be a distinct use from three or more units, which is under New Jersey's municipal land use law called a multifamily use, and previously, you would need what's called a D two u- use variance, um, D one, excuse me, thank you, Francisco, um, for expanding a non-conforming use, but because now that multifamily is an explicitly allowed use in the R one, uh, neighborhood housing district, um, there is no use variance here, and the density is grandfathered, so the only variances at hand are the five C variances mentioned, um, staff supports the granting of these variances, and, uh, with that, I would just like to note, um, uh, staff is recommending several conditions related to this approval, so there are five conditions laid out in my memo, um, related to keeping testimony binding, addressing or complying with all comments from municipal review agents, um, keeping the material and color selections as shown in these plans, um, as accurate, and providing an affidavit from the architect of record, um, that the constructed project is consistent with the final approved plans, and of course, that all street trees and landscaping complies with our Jersey City forestry standards. Additionally, um, I believe, um, uh, Mr. Burke expressed interest in adding a condition related to, um, um, installing during construction, installing some sort of barriers or other features to minimize the potential for detritus from the construction site to find its way into adjacent properties, um, so, um, I'm recommending that as a sixth condition.
The applicant agrees to those conditions.
Um, and with that, um, commissioners, if you have any questions, I'm all ears.
May I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to our group, case two two zero twenty-four zero zero one three, whose conditions?
I second it.
All right, taking role, Commissioner Shadique?
Yes.
Commissioner Sibley?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Allen?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you, Chairman and Board.
Welcome.
Next case?
Next case is Z two zero two four dash zero zero two eight, minor site plan with C and D variances, the address is fifty-three Bergen Avenue, the attorney is Ronald Schal- Schalgen. Uh, did I get it right?
Yes, perfectly, which is very unusual, I, I might add.
Mr. Schalgen, we do have your notices for this case, your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication, so Bridget will mark that as A one for this application.
A one.
Thank you, Mr. LaPape.
Point number one, point number two, you do have a D variance, and we only have five commissioners, so...
Uh, yeah, the D variance is so minimal, that we're gonna go with the five commissioners, uh, the reason for the D variances, this is a reuse of an existing bank building, and the use of the second floor as, uh, I guess, other than storage, requires a D variance, and that's why planning suggested that we file for a D variance, and that's why we're here. Uh, before, uh, we begin, I just like to say that, um, my client is, uh, the New City Kids Church, and, uh, I've been representing them for about twenty years, when we started, uh, they, they had a facility on Monticello and Fairmount, and ever since then, they've evolved, and now, they've come into possession of this beautiful bank building that Providence was so gracious enough to donate to them, and, um, they're gonna turn this into something that's gonna be absolutely beautiful. So, instead of my giving any more opening remarks, I have something that I'd like to present to you, and it'll just take a couple minutes, and you'll better understand what we do. This is Sean Hopkins, he's the director of New City Kids.
What's that? Oh, no, you don't, you're marking your name? No. No.
Urban poverty is putting a generation of youth at risk. Violence, drugs, lack of higher education, and abuses of all kinds are rampant in poor urban areas. Across the U.S., children from first to twelfth grade face great obstacles every day.
Can I just?
Living in poverty puts...
There seems to be a delay, sorry.
You want a timeout, so we can, uh, go off the record for a moment?
Oh, okay, I think we may be good, I apologize.
Only nine percent of low-income students will graduate college by twenty-four, but there is hope. New City Kids breaks the cycle of poverty. Youth are challenged to see themselves as leaders and changemakers, charting a new path both for themselves and for the children who look up to them. New City Kids creates a community like no other, through a network of after-school programs in urban communities. These centers serve children from first to eighth grade, fostering an environment where young people are loved, seen not as the problem, but the solution. We hire local high school students to teach music and tutor younger children after school. We train our students, mentor them, tutor them, and pray for them every day. The results amaze everyone. Our teens find themselves surrounded by loving mentors in a safe and creative environment, and they flourish. Their grades improve, they gain self-confidence and joy. This new community filled with music and fun creates a window to a brighter future. New City Kids impacts high school students profoundly. Every senior we have employed in the past eight years has graduated high school and gone to college, and ninety percent of New City Kids alumni have earned a degree or are on tractor graduate. New City Kids is changing lives, families, and communities. Join us today. Let's empower a generation of youth to break the cycle of poverty and make their cities new.
That's who we are. I'd like to call as the first witness, uh, the Associate Director of New City Kids, I've instructed him to only speak for one minute, just to describe the program and, uh, really why we're here.
Can you raise your right hand this morning? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes. Yep, David Carment, D A V I D, C A R M E N T. My other job is a pastor, so one minute really means five, but I'll keep it to one, I promise. Um, the video was a little glitchy, but I'll give you it to you in a nutshell, we employ, uh, over a hundred high schoolers this past year, we have another ninety that we're gonna be, sorry. We employ, uh, over ninety high schoolers this upcoming year, another twenty to thirty that volunteer, so we're talking about a hundred and twenty youth that are served, and they help us run three after-school programs for first to eighth grade students, so we're serving hundreds of kids every single day, uh, through music, through tutoring, um, and our teen life internship is our lifeblood, and so this building project is gonna be a space for them. Uh, it'll, we'll offer low-cost music lessons to kids in the community, it'll be a teen, uh, lounge for them with a kitchen, uh, and amenities, and most importantly, it'll have a basketball court area and a performing arts space, so our teens can hang out, shoot hoops, as well as perform for performances. Uh, but my main purpose of why I'm sharing is that we are on a critical deadline, uh, we have a funder, the Simon Foundation, that's sunsetting, uh, and so we have to hit a deadline of December, otherwise, we're gonna lose out on a half a million dollars of funding for our building project, and as a nonprofit, we fundraise everything we have, and so, we don't just have another half a million dollars that we can get, uh, through investments or things like that, and so for us, getting your approval here tonight, as well as the building department's approval, is critical, uh, to help serve the youth of Jersey City, and to really be a safe haven for many of our high schoolers, and I'll just close with this, we target our lowest-performing high schools in Jersey City, and so we, we look at Lincoln, Snyder, Dickinson, um, as, as the places where we wanna hire our youth, and make sure that not only is high school, uh, complete for them, but they have a trajectory to college and a career ahead of that. Uh, seventy-five percent of our youth are first-gen college-bound students when they graduate. I hope I hit a minute, but that's all I have to say.
Just a little bit under.
All right, I appreciate it. Okay, um, our first witness is Mike Higgins, the architect, Mike is gonna put a exhibit on the board, and he'll explain what we're trying to do.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes. Michael Higgins, M I C H A E L, H I G G I N S. I don't believe I've testified before the zoning board before, so I was at the planning board here Tuesday night, and I've testified before zoning boards and planning boards throughout New Jersey, um, a licensed architect that's active in New Jersey, I'm the managing principal of MHS Architecture, uh, where I've been for over thirty years.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you all. Um, okay, so this is, uh, I have a slide deck that's included in the submission package for that we've submitted, uh, this building is, uh, five thirty-three Bergen Ave, it's formerly the Providence Bank Building, uh, it's a historic building, um, at the corner of Harrison and, uh, Bergen Ave. Um, we are essentially just renovating the entire interior to make it function for the New City Kids program, these are some, uh, the slide is this, the current, uh, condition of the building, the exterior-wise, we'll be changing the windows, putting a new roof, making sure the building is watertight, uh, repairing some of the brick, and putting an entrance, uh, on the Harrison Street side, so that people aren't entering through the front door, which was on Bergen, which is busier, and also, it wasn't handicap accessible. Go to the, let's see here. Okay, the next slide, the demolition page, it just shows the walls, it's gonna be basically a full gut renovation to bring everything up to code, and, um, make it fully handicap accessible. These plans show the ground floor, uh, the basement, and also the second floor, the second floor is just a partial floor, um, and let me just go through some of the things that we've noted as deviations, uh, so this is an existing two-story building with a basement, it's approximately thirty-three feet, uh, point nine feet, uh, building height, the site itself is sixty-four hundred and fifty-eight square feet, it's roughly fifty-one by one twenty-six, the lock coverage currently was, uh, or proposed is eighty-six point six percent, it's an additional one point three percent for this, oh, just lost the page, for this sidewalk that we've added for accessibility to the, to the, uh, back area, and also to the lower level of the basement, so it's just a small little increase in the sidewalk width.
Now, is that, is that a deviation, a variance that we need?
It's not a variance, it's just a change in the lock coverage.
Okay.
Yep, the variances here that we're asking for is the use variance for the second floor space, and then also, I think there's a existing minimum front yard, uh, deviation, but it's an existing building, it just doesn't conform with what the requirements are, and then there was a signage, a deviation, so I should actually go back to the first page, just to show you the sign we're talking about. On the front of the building, there's sort of, it's a stone facade, and if you see, there's an engraved sort of sign that says something like Providence Institution Savings Bank, it's a nice historical element of the building, we'd like to keep that, but it exceeds the signage requirement, there is a new sign proposed that I'll show you in the documents, very small sign that does conform to the requirements, um, and, but this sign is just there, we prefer not to remove it, it brings in some of the historical character. The, the plan includes, at the ground floor, I'll walk you through the entrance, this is the entrance off Harrison, there's a small vestibule, reception area, an existing bathroom, uh, there's a storage in the previous, uh, vault, and then you have the ground floor, large... large bank space where the teller stations were, which is all being removed. But we'll have a half-court basketball and an area for performance, sort of a multipurpose recreation space for the kids. We're also adding an elevator to provide handicap-accessible path of travel to the second floor and the ground floor and the basement. There is also a handicap-accessible bathroom on this ground floor. And you see at the rear yard, there's the new emergency exit and that additional sidewalk that increased the lock coverage a small percentage. Go to the next page. The basement. So this is the basement plan. The basement is 3,968 square feet. Down in this basement will have four music rooms, accessible bathrooms, and a small storage area, including some mechanical equipment. We'll be doing some improvements to the basement for ventilation and other things to bring it up to code, and also some waterproof treatment and cleaning out the drains, all the basic stuff required. This spaces access from that stair, and there's also a rear exit for emergency purposes only that takes you back out to that sidewalk where the new sidewalk was in the rear yard. The second floor, it's just a partial space, and it's going to house a break room and an office for the staff. It'll also have an accessible bathroom up there, a little small mechanical room.
And is that what triggered the D variance?
Yes, and that's the space we're talking about. This space, I'll zoom it in a little bit so you can see it. But it's an existing mezzanine platform that the bank used as a storage area. But for this program, they need a small office and a break area for the staff, a little kitchenette, not a real high occupancy. I'll go to the elevations next. So existing... Everything on the elevation is going to remain. The new door is being put in this location on Harrison. Again, so that it can be an accessible entrance. There'll be a small sign there that conforms the signage. I have some details on the sign. Let me just get to that. Okay, so this is just named after the donor, and it's a small conforming sign that'll be just above the door in the transom panel. The windows will be replaced. There'll be some improvement to the waterproofing of the exterior, recoating the base. There had been a blue coating on the base of the building. That'll be something that's a paint, new finish coating that sort of matches the stone color, like a limestone type of color. New windows will have black frames, and everything else will just be existing repaired to match the existing building. That's the intent. I think that concludes my testimony. Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions of the architect?
Okay.
Mr. Bellamy?
Hello again. For the record, Samuel Bellamy, and I do recognize I'm still under oath.
Mr. Bellamy, walk us through the justification for the D variance and whatever C variances are triggered, please.
Sure. So this property is located within the R3 multi-unit mid-rise district in the city. We are asking for the D1 use variance with this application. As testified to, it's really related to that mezzanine level where the community center use actually falls within the retail services and office category within the city, and that's not permitted above the ground floor. So that's what's triggering the D1 use variance. We're also asking for a bulk C variance for the impervious lock coverage. Just to clarify, Mr. Higgins' previous testimony, there's a slight increase to an existing nonconforming condition there. So that slight increase triggers a new C variance request with... Related to the signage and front yard setback, there's no changes to those existing nonconforming use... Nonconforming bulk conditions. So we don't believe we need new variances for those, as we're not intensifying those previous conditions at all. With respect to the use variance, so as I testified to, it's related to the small mezzanine level of the building, which is approximately 40% of the interior area. As you could see from the prior facade elevations that were up, it's... The building itself really appears as a one-story building. So unless you're interior to the building, you really don't realize it's two stories with that mezzanine level. Government uses are permitted use within the zone, and they're actually permitted on all floors. Within that definition of a government use includes community centers, but it's related to public community centers. So since this is actually a private ownership of the nonprofit community center use, it doesn't fall within that category. So it's really a technical use variance that we're asking for. So I think from a zoning and use perspective, it's really in line with what the zoning calls for here. You heard we're adaptively reusing the existing bank building. That also was a pre-existing nonconforming use where it also had that mezzanine level with offices, retail. So, you know, we're going from essentially the same similar condition, but I think we're bringing into more community aspect by providing the community center use within the building. I think overall, the site is particularly well-suited for the community center use. The project site itself is located along Bergen Avenue, which is a mixed-use corridor within the city. So I think providing community center use is a nice aspect and kind of a different mix of use that could be enjoyed by the surrounding area. With respect to the bulk C variance that we're asking for, it's a 1.3% increase. That increases the overall coverage to 88.6%. 80% is the max that's permitted. Again, that increase is really related to the rear yard area, the sidewalks, retaining wall. That's going to be implemented to meet all ADA access to the rear yard and cellar levels of the building. To kind of mitigate that increase, we are adding four new street trees along the streetscape in addition to the trees that... Some of the trees that are already out there, and those also tree pit areas that kind of manages stormwater themselves. The project is consistent with the municipal land use law. Again, I think it is an appropriate use and development of the site as a community center use. I think it is an appropriate location and appropriate-sized property and building for the community center use, consistent with purpose G. I think by adaptively reusing this currently vacant building, bringing it back to life on a... No problem. Reusing this existing bank building for community center use on a prominent corner on Bergen Avenue, I think it's an appropriate location, consistent with purpose G. The C variances, I testified to, I think the benefits there would substantially outweigh the detriment. With respect to the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare here. Again, this community center use is going to be available for after-school and summer programming for local youth. I think you heard the story, and I think that does have a tremendous positive impact on the area. I don't see a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. I think it's consistent with the master plan with respect to upgrading community facilities, adding community facilities to the area, while also adaptively reusing an existing building. Overall, I think both the positive and negative criteria have been met. Again, I think the site is particularly well-suited for the use, and that the benefits would substantially outweigh the detriments here. With that, that would conclude my direct testimony, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions from the board? Okay, that would be it. We will open up the public comment. Anyone from the public have any comments?
That concludes our case, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so...
Yes, yes.
They want to go home early, too.
Get all their names. No, just kidding.
Staff recommendations?
In addition to the applicant's testimony, I would like to say that the proposed use is, according to the Jersey City Master Plan, identified alongside a neighborhood corridor. And a neighborhood corridor is defined as a corridor with some mixed-use character with higher densities compared to neighboring streets. This is evident on the street and on the block where the site is located on itself. And so it will strengthen the character of a neighborhood corridor. In addition to that, the purpose of the district is to provide a broad range of multi-unit housing, an area served by arterial streets, mass transit, neighborhood commercial uses, and community facilities. Given that this is a youth community center, it will further the goal of this district, too. And so Planning Staff does recommend approval of this application, under the conditions outlined in the planning memo dated August 5, 2024.
I have a copy of that report, and the applicant agrees to be bound by the conditions set forth in the August 5, 2024 report.
May I have a motion?
On a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Zablowski?
I want to say that it's always great to see a corner property be turned into something so good, because it does, as she said, set up neighborhoods in different directions, not just Bergen Avenue. Now it sets up the rest of the block. But obviously, the use that you guys have there, I think, makes it even better. So obviously, I vote yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes, I would like to add to my... But I have the pleasure attending one of the after-school session in school number 11 in 1920, around that, and I really enjoyed it very much. I'm supporting the program. It's going to add a lot to the area, especially around that area in Bergen and Harrison and Communityville. It's very crowded, and many immigrants would really benefit from that session. So good luck, and my best wishes, and yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
I'd just like to say, it's a beautiful building. It's a great program, and I wish you all the best. Welcome to the neighborhood. Of course, it's a yes.
And Acting Chair Allen?
I'm so happy for you guys. I wish you the best. The project looks good. I'm a yes.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you.
I just have a silly question. Is there still a vault in there? A lot of these old banks have these old vaults. They're really kind of cool. Oh, wow. Okay.
Well, we have to write a condition, and if they find any money, they have to split it with the boy.
Just ready to say. We better go through that. Hopefully, no people in it, but yeah.
Francisco? Any resolutions to be memorialized?
Yes, we have five.
Okay. Yep.
These first two resolutions, these cases were heard on July 11. And present on July 11 were chairperson Coyle, Commissioners Arroyo, Burns, Allen, Barron, and Shadid. Both of these cases that I'm about to say passed six in favor, none opposed. So the first case is Z2024-0036. Angela and Michael, last name is J-A-I-K-I-S-S-O-O-N. Jackasson. It's 294-296 Union Street. It was an application for an extension, which was granted. Six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
Next case was also an application for an extension of time. And again, same six commissioners, same six in favor, none opposed. And it was Z2024-0035. The applicant was Farhad Behin. That's B-E-H-I-N. The address was 297th Street. Again, an application for an extension. That passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that is?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next three cases were heard on July 25. On July 25, the chairperson was Sonia Arroyo, and the commissioners were Boyle, Shadid, Barron, Zablowski, and Allen. All three of these cases passed six in favor, none opposed. And the first case was Z22-069. It was a preliminary and final major site plan approval with variances. The applicant was Mudra Ventures LLC, and the address was 59 Montrose Avenue. And again, that passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of approving that is?
Aye.
And the next case, again, July 25, same six commissioners, same six votes, six in favor, none opposed. The case was Z2024-0016, a preliminary and major final site plan approval with variances, submitted by Gregory Judge for 8 Highland Avenue and 819 Bergen Avenue. All in favor of approving that is? Aye.
Aye.
And again, next case, July 25, same six commissioners, same six in favor, none opposed. Case Z2024-0037, an amended preliminary and final major site plan approval submitted by John and Mary Ann LLC for 3443 Kennedy Boulevard. All in favor of memorializing that is?
Aye. Aye.
And that concludes everything for this evening as far as the resolutions. No other business, right, Francisco?
No. Just another reminder that the meeting for the September 12 is canceled.
Great. So we'll move to close?
Make a motion to close.
All in favor, second?
Second.
Yes.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.